I'd like to call to order the City of Waynesboro Planning Commission meeting for today, Tuesday, July 20th, 21st. Mr. Aries, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And could I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to, wait a minute.
To adopt.
To adopt tonight's agenda.
Could I have a second?
A second.
Everyone in favor of adopting the agenda as presented for the City of Waynesboro Planning Commission for Tuesday, July 20th, 21st, please say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, I mean, not in favor, a motion carries. Has everyone had a chance to take a look over the minutes from the meeting held June 22nd?
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty twenty. Any questions, comments? No. Someone want to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion that the minutes be adopted.
I'll second.
Everyone in favor of approving the minutes from the meeting held June 22nd, 2021? Say aye.
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? The motion carries. And we have a public comment period for items not on the agenda? Everybody? I don't see anyone lined up out there. We're done with the phone thing.
I did not get, yeah, and I do not have a sign up sheets tonight, so you just ask for anyone to come to the mic.
Okay. I don't see anyone approaching the mic, so I think we're good for that. So tonight, we have a public hearing, request by Vector Industries to change the zoning of 901 Fairfax Avenue, tax map number 26-2-59-1 and 26-1-4 lots 4, 5, and 6 from L1 Light Industrial to RG5 Residential. And staff is going to present some information for us to consider.
This application is for a rezoning of the parcels located at 901 Fairfax Avenue. The property is located off of Bridge Avenue in the northern part of the city. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of the parcels from Light Industrial to General Residential. The parcels are currently vacant, and the applicant wishes to build four single-family dwellings. This shows a copy of the preliminary plat submitted by the applicant. And this is a potential site layout, though this isn't a proffered site plan. The surrounding land uses are primarily single-family residential, which surround the property on three sides, and then industrial buildings to the north of the property. This request is a downzoning. The subject property is zoned for Light Industrial, which is meant to provide locations for low-intensity manufacturing industrial activities that may generate some nuisances. Generally, industrial uses shouldn't be interspersed with or adjacent to residential districts without some separation by an arterial street or other buffer. A rezoning to RG5 would lessen the intensity of allowable uses on the property, reduce entitlements to generate traffic, and would allow for numerous residential uses. Fairfax Avenue is a narrow road without curb and gutter, and isn't ideal for heavy truck traffic. In addition, the rezoning would improve the continuity with the other properties in the vicinity. Properties on three sides of the subject parcel are all zoned to RG5 and consist mainly of single-family residences. The rezoning would provide for lower-density uses similar to these surrounding parcels while containing the existing industrial uses to their current location. The comprehensive land use plan designates these parcels as medium-density residential, which matches the use of the majority of the parcels surrounding the subject property. Rezoning it from Light Industrial to RG5 is consistent with the land use plan's desired use for this property. Staff is recommending approval of this request. The rezoning is consistent with the long-term vision for this area, and it would improve the continuity with the other parcels in the vicinity. That's all I have for you. Ready for any questions you may have? And I believe the applicant's also here to answer any questions.
Would you mind going back to the map and giving some landmarks so that can be clear? Or maybe we can be clear exactly where that is? There's a park here.
No, it's the City Shops there.
The shops.
The, I think the park was from the comp plan.
Oh, the comp plan, okay. Yeah, that was a little confusing.
North Park is down there.
Yeah.
The comp plan park designation's a little bit of a misleading.
Yeah, that kind of threw me off.
It's more like institutional uses, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yes, okay. All right. Thank you.
In fact, isn't that the entrance to the park right off Bridge Avenue?
Uh, just, yeah.
Or a little down.
On the bottom, yeah.
Yeah. Right across the street from City Yard.
Any other questions? Would the applicant like to approach the podium?
Good evening.
If you can state your name and address, that would be great.
I'm Bill Hosrath. I live at 369 Walnut Avenue, Waynesboro. I am on the Board of Directors for Vector Foundation, and Vector Industries has consolidated all their operations at 1300 Hopeman Parkway. And this, these lots were acquired by Vector with the idea that they would one day build and expand, but for the same reason that they haven't been readily saleable as Light Industrial, Vector found that it was too small a parcel to efficiently develop into industrial use, which is why we ended up as a nonprofit to relocate over to Hopeman Parkway. I also represent the guys that are going to build those houses there. And so, you know, the sense very much is that there's a, quite a dearth of small, affordable houses in the city right now. And this represents a reasonable place to put them. By being able to build four, we can kind of add some change into that neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hosrath?
Actually, I believe small houses would be very consistent
Yep.
with what's in the neighborhood and behind that. Was there ever any other buildings on that property that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we're pretty good. Thank you for your time, Mr. Hosrath. Okay, so I am going to open the public hearing. I'm opening the public hearing on, one second. Public hearing for Vector Industries Foundation to change the zoning of 901 Fairfax Avenue, tax map numbers 26-2-59-1 and 26-1-4 lots 4, 5, and 6 from Light Industrial to RG5 Residential. Is there anyone who would like to approach the podium? Do you have any emails or anything?
I've received no written or phone call comments.
Okay, so I don't think anyone's going to approach the podium tonight on this issue. You're welcome to if you want to. So I can close the public hearing. And I think we've heard from the applicant already. And staff, I believe you recommended approval of the rezoning. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the city council to rezone the lot, or the lots located at, or the lots located at 901 Fairfax Avenue, tax map numbers 26-2-59-1 and 26-1-4 lots 4, 5, and 6 from L1 Light Industrial to RG5 General Residential.
Everyone in favor of?
I'll second.
Oh, any second, sorry, a second. Everyone in favor of the recommendation as presented by Mr. Aries, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? And that motion carries. And on to the next public hearing. The next public hearing we're going to do is on a request by Jacob Turner to change the zoning of 1040 Reservoir Street, tax map number 47-1-215-5, from RG5 General Residential to RMF Multi-Family Residential.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The subject property is located on Reservoir Street, so if you're over on the east side going up Delphine, take a right on Sixth, and then cut over on Winchester. It's the road that goes up on the sort of right side if you're looking right at Fairfax Hall. The property is located a little ways up the hill there. Not all the way to Mr. Gibson's house. The nature of the request, the applicant's requesting a rezoning from the current designation, which is RG5 General Residential, to RMF Residential Multi-Family. This is also an upzoning, which is increasing the allowable intensity of use. The applicant's intent is to demolish the existing structure and construct 15 attached units there. Currently, the structure has a house, which you can sort of see in this picture. It's a brick house that was constructed in 1903. It's currently vacant and in a state of disrepair, and it is not a designated historic structure, and thus is not protected under the city ordinance. Here's the location and the vicinity. See, the property's right here. This is actually not the real boundaries of the property, but it's roughly here. Immediately adjacent to it on all sides are single-family dwellings on Woodland Circle and then on Reservoir Street. Just across the street is Fairfax Hall, which is zoned RMF, and that's currently housing for low-income elderly people. Just down the hill a little bit is a quadplex and a small apartment building on Winchester Avenue. And then up the street further is more single-family homes, and then a couple of townhomes further up here on Reservoir. And then this li down here is actually Sunset Park, or the front of the old landfill. The city's GIS boundaries do not actually match what is out there. We need to clean this up. This is a vacated alley that was vacated several decades ago, and was never replatted. So the actual boundaries are roughly square. It looks about like this. The lot's about 200 feet by 215 feet square, or very close to an acre. And it goes all the way back to the rear of those properties on Woodland Circle. The applicant's current zoning is RG5. RG5, as you all are well aware, allows for single-family homes with a minimum of 50-foot feet of street frontage. The site could fit probably three to four with no new road construction. And then there's a maximum height of 35 feet. It also allows for various types of attached homes. These have to front on a public street that's built to the city standard, so they have to have at least that frontage along Reservoir. And the site's not really wide enough to construct a new public street in the middle and be able to front lots onto it, so probably is all going to have to front on Reservoir. Townhome units have to be offset. That means that the front facades have to be articulated, set off by about five feet, so you can't have them just be a blank, solid wall. And they can be developed at a maximum of eight units per acre. Surface parking is not permitted between the units and the street, and this is consistent for all those housing types in different zones. So theoretically, under its current zoning, staff thinks that the site could probably fit, the applicant today could probably tear down the structure and construct seven or possibly eight townhomes on the site with no zoning change. The applicant's requested zone is RMF Residential Multi-Family. This allows all the same types of housings that are allowed in other residential zones. It also allows multifamily buildings and complexes. The applicant hopes to construct something that will essentially look like townhomes, but in our ordinance, it's considered multifamily because they would not all be fronting on the public street. And so you couldn't have separate lots. We don't allow private lots to front on a private street. So it's a maximum density of 20 units per acre rather than eight. Units do not need to front on the city street. Theoretically, the applicant could get a maximum of 19 units with this new zoning. The minimum, the maximum height is 65 feet for this zone. However, there have to be, there's step backs to the height if it's bordered by a lower-intensity residential district, so functionally, I don't think that the height would be significantly different than the current zoning. Here's the applicant's proposed layout. Here's Reservoir Street down here at the bottom. As you can see, he's proposing an entrance here and then parking in between. So to satisfy the ordinance, he would not have surface parking between the units and the street, so these would front onto Reservoir Street, and then you would have a whole row of units behind it. This site plan shows 15 units, and the applicant is proposing to build some kind of attached townhome product. You can see up here is the rear of the houses on Woodland Circle. I'll bring up this project just because it's very similar in nature, but the Village Drive townhouses that there's conditional use for it for about three years ago, I think most of you probably remember those. These were 14 townhouse-style condominiums that were built, so the same situation where they wanted to build more and build two sets of them that were not fronting on a public street. And so they looked like townhomes, but they did a multifamily complex for the zoning code and sold them as condominiums then. So essentially, they did the same thing. They did an entrance off the street, they did surface parking, and then they did two rows of buildings with one fronting on the street so that the parking wasn't between the building and the street. And that was also about a one-acre lot, and they did 14 townhouse-style condos. You can see those under construction out on West Main. It was adjacent on one side to commercial uses on West Main, and then on either side was also adjacent to commercial uses, and then across the street were single-family homes on Village Drive. So I bring that up as sort of a precedent of a similar type of project. The comprehensive plan for this area designates it as medium-density residential. Our land use plan calls medium-density residential as an area accommodating up to eight dwelling units per acre, so it basically is meant to accommodate the RG5 zone, the RS5 zone, and to a lesser extent, LB and some other zones like that. RG5 is kind of our typical medium-density residential zone, and that's the zone of most of that neighborhood, as you can see. Back to the issue about it being a park. You can see Fairfax Hall is designated a park in the comprehensive plan. I think it's partially because the land use map predates the Fairfax Hall conversion, but also partially because park, as I mentioned in the comp plan, is really sort of open space, green space, or institutional use, something like that. And so it's not looking at Fairfax Hall necessarily as a multifamily structure, even though it is zoned RMF and under the zoning map. The nearest area that is designated for high-density residential is up here on Fourth Street, and that's where the quadrangle apartments are, and then further west towards downtown. For utilities and access, Reservoir currently is a 26-foot-wide residential collector. That's somewhat narrow for our older neighborhoods, but that's actually the current minimum standard, and so that's the width of the streets that we've approved in some of the newer subdivisions under our new ordinance, like out in Quisenberry, that same 26-foot section. So if you want an idea of how wide 26 feet is in the streets that you all recently approved, go take a drive up Reservoir Street there. It does not have curb and gutter. It is a collector street, so it has somewhat more traffic than like a side residential street, but it is capable of handling plenty of additional traffic. It doesn't have any kind of volume-to-capacity ratio issue. There are no sidewalks in the vicinity. I think the nearest sidewalks are when you get down to Delphine and then cross over and start to head towards the core. And there is an eight-inch water line in Reservoir, and there's plenty of water and sewer capacity in that area, so utilities should not be an issue for increasing intensity of use. Staff is not recommending approval. Doesn't think that, I think it's a terrible idea, but I think that some additional activity and density would be appropriate for this location, that we have sufficient road and utility capacity already. You have the RMF zone located across the street, so it wouldn't be entirely unprecedented if you wanted to recommend approval for it. That said, it's not walkable to the city core, and generally, we put an emphasis on higher-density residential uses being towards the core where they're closer to walkable areas. There's no proffered site plan, so the site plans that the applicant has provided are conceptual, and you should judge the rezoning based on the potential build-out. The main reason is just that the current zoning allows for seven to eight units already, while remaining consistent with the comp plan and the surrounding zoning and land uses. And generally, I, you know, like to sort of have a prescriptive bias in favor of whatever someone wants to do and what the market is calling for, but we feel that under the current zoning that we can already accommodate an increase in intensity here without necessarily having to go that big a step up when surrounded on three sides by single-family homes. So that's why staff are not recommending it. Like I said, not a, I don't think it's a disaster if you do want to recommend or build it, but could provide some new construction and bring some new activity and new residents to the area, on the other, on the other hand. Questions for me?
Can you go back to the zoning map? Well, actually?
I guess we don't have the zoning map here.
The cul-de-sac. That's single-family dwellings off of that?
Yes.
And, and pretty much all the way up, it was single-family dwellings.
Yeah, pretty much. There's some townhomes right up here.
Behind those was that Sunset Park?
Yes.
Okay.
And then right here is your nearest sort of multifamily use. These are all in the RG5 district, though, so they could be redeveloped as attached duplexes or that type of thing, but not as multifamily, yeah.
Did I understand from reading the materials that the alleyway shown in there had been actually abandoned by the city?
Yes, this alley's been vacated, so the property, the actual property boundary looks like this. It's about a square property, and you can kind of see that on the applicant's site plan here. Questions?
What's the difference in setback from the road for, and this is just maybe not an appropriate question, from RG5, it's like you have to be pretty far off the road for RG5, right?
I believe it's a 20-foot front setback for RG5.
And is it the same for RMF?
Man, I think it is. I'm, you caught me, my pants, I'm going to look that up.
If most of the houses over there are just, are set back 25, if it's, if it's not nearly as close, then I wonder if?
Most of them are set back a little further than that, but the actual, whoops. Uh-oh. The actual setback requirement is 20. Yeah, the applicant showing, as you can see, a lot of these, I think because it's a busier street, a lot of them are built a little bit further back on their lots, but.
So under the RG5, eight or nine townhomes could be built there?
Probably more like seven, maybe eight.
Maybe, maybe eight.
It would depend on how they, how it worked out as access to get, because again, because you can't park in the front, you'd have to work out some way to get to the rear, yeah. Or you can do surface parking in front. You can do like the Evershire did with the garages.
Anyone else have any questions for Luke? Does the applicant want to approach the podium?
Yes, ma'am.
If you could give your name and address, that would be great.
I'm Jake Turner, 270 Spring Lane. This is a better close-up picture. I've had the property for about 10 years, and it's, like Luke said, it's in, it needs to be repaired or tore down or whatnot, so I kind of looked at the property and said, what's a good fit? And instead of going to apartment complex, let's switch down the corner, thought maybe doing a blend, keeping a neighborhood residential. And my game plan is to sell these homes to affordable housing somewhere in the mid-low market, so, and bring in a product that people can be proud of and use their outdoor space. This option I'm looking here is having rooftop patios and things of that nature, kind of just something to bring some energy to the table. Luke has mentioned since the beginning that he wasn't really crazy about the idea, just because it didn't fall into the plan. I did reach out to some council members and just ran a bio and see what she would think. They were somewhat positive, so I thought I'd give it a try.
What, what is the need for that many homes that you'd like to put there? I mean?
I think with the market and the way we're in now, there's a need for affordable housing or for, you know, young couples, low income, not, I wouldn't say low income, but people who are getting into it. And this is a good fit, and then most people I'm seeing is going for, they want low-maintenance homes, they want things they can use and be able to take care of. And from a number standpoint, it just made more sense financially for us.
And how many floors would they be?
Three floors.
Three floors?
Yeah. That would include the patio on top.
But you're not proffering that necessarily or committing to it, right?
I'm open to it.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
That's interesting.
Were you, of course, the picture, actually, this looks like something from Harrisonburg, but.
It do. I think that actual product's from Charlottesville, but, yeah.
Were you planning something as high as three stories, or?
No, on that one, you say the first floor and the second floor. The first floor would be more of a living space, the second floor would be living rooms, I mean, I'm sorry, bedrooms, and then the top floor would be outdoor space, patio.
Okay.
Now you say top floor, are you actually talking about the rooftop?
Okay. So that looks like three distinctive floors and a rooftop on those. Is this, is this the?
Cut that, cut the bottom off, and that's, so it'd be one, two, and then rooftop.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yep.
How you plan on dealing with the water runoff? Because I'm pretty sure the lady that lives right beside that property already has some water issues, and by the excavation that's going to be required to build that, you're going to have some runoff, so where are you going to put it?
It's, he'll, he'll be required to do all that through RENS regulations, yeah. Even if it's not a rezoning, we require that of all, all construction. And actually, a lot of that woman's runoff is coming off the landfill. It's really our fault, so.
Well, yeah, but it comes off of Woodland Circle and up the street from her.
Yes.
So, and maybe I'm wrong, but I'm trying to assess the situation in my mind. Essentially, the upzoning would allow you twice as many homes?
Seven more homes.
But if we're looking at seven or eight, that, it doubles your capacity? And, and the essential difference is you don't have to stagger the front doors?
Correct.
And they don't all have to front on the street?
Right, they don't have to.
And it can be taller?
Yeah, yeah.
Back to, I guess we probably should have discussed proffering more, but if the applicant wants to submit something in writing committing to particular restrictions beyond whatever our zoning code is, then you could consider that. As I said, without that, you have to consider that it's maximum of 19 units that you're approving, and, yeah.
Okay.
But if the applicant's open to that, I know you're able to.
What do you, what do you, if we change the zoning by right, what could he, would he, would he have, he wouldn't have to bring anything back to us? Is that what you're saying? He'd have to bring it to you?
Right. Once you change the zoning, he has a by-right entitlement to whatever's allowed by our zoning code, and so, yeah.
But he'll have to bring it to you for approval?
Site plan approval, yes, that's right.
But if he's got a by-right, you're?
We are obligated to approve it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're obligated to approve it, assuming that it meets all the other requirements of that particular zone.
Correct. The applicant can voluntarily commit in writing to, you know, a reduction of units or whatever from the, what's allowed, but that has to be initiated by him. We can't request that, so, yeah.
I'm happy to do that, because that's about as tight as you want to get.
While I'll agree that some improvement needs to be, because every day I go by that house, the door is open, the window's knocked out, there's sometimes people hanging out on the porch.
It's horrible.
The grass is usually up to, up to somebody's waist.
It wasn't so bad for me and my dogs walked on it.
I, I just can't see 16 townhomes right there in that particular. I just can't see 16 townhomes right there in that particular location. Yes, I understand there's apartments down at the foot of the hill between, at the corner of Reservoir and Winchester, and there's a row of townhomes up on Fifth Street. I just don't think the 16 fits in that, on that street, right there in that area, because they're all single-family homes right there.
I can appreciate that. The townhomes is supposed to be, you know, individually owned and so keep that residential feel.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Otherwise, we can open the public hearing. Okay. I would, thank you very much.
Before you close, before you close the hearing, let me ask-
I haven't opened the hearing yet.
Oh, you haven't opened it?
No, we're still under the presentation. I haven't even opened the hearing yet. We're getting there.
You can ask him a question.
You can, you can ask him a question if you want.
Well, actually, I wanted to ask Luke a question. Across the way, you have the structure of Fairfax Hall.
Correct.
But behind it, it appeared to be apartment houses?
There's a little, little row of apartments right behind Fairfax Hall, correct?
I don't know, do you know?
I want to say it's like a dozen or something like that.
Yeah, it's only about 10 or 12 in there.
Okay. It was kind of a brick building?
Yeah, it was, I believe it was originally part of, it was an extension of Fairfax Hall originally, but now they're rented out separately, I think, from the Fairfax Hall.
I think staff used to live in there when it was-
Servants, that kind of thing.
Well, well, housekeepers, maintenance and stuff like that used to live in there, from what I've been told, so, but yes, I think it's about 10 or 12 apartments in that brick building. Steven?
All right.
Yep.
According to Winchester and Reservoirs, 20 years, is it that great?
I know there's, I think there's a dozen in that apartment building, and then there's two, there's a quadplex next to it. It's close to that, yeah.
Yeah, it's close to 20.
Yeah, close to that.
Okay, now I think I can open the public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing on a request by Jacob Turner to change the zoning of 1040 Reservoir Street, tax map 47-1-215-5, from RG5 General Residential to RMF Multifamily Residential. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to come to the podium? I think we can-
So we've received one, one written comment from Barbara Isley at 420 Woodland Circle. She says her backyard backs up to the property, used to house teachers, thinks it should be historic, that it's not been maintained, that she was very concerned about the scale of the new development, felt that there would be more traffic, people in the schools, it would, there would be no green space and open space, and thought it would be a significant change to the neighborhood. Yeah, so she was opposed. That's the only comment that I received.
Okay, thank you, Luke. And I think I can close the public hearing. Do we have some discussion amongst ourselves?
Yeah, all the, all the townhomes and apartment buildings that y'all talked about, they're down on Winchester. They're not up on Reservoir Street, except for that one little two-story apartment building right there.
This is tough, this is a tough one for me.
I feel like that while I think that it would be great to tear that down, it needs to be done and stay within the RG5 requirements for what you put there, I personally feel like it's almost an out-of-place look for what is there already. I mean, that's, and I think the plan, the comprehensive plan was probably well-thought-out and zoned for that reason. I believe this pushes it a little bit to maybe not fit, but certainly, whatever goes in the RG5, I would support. This is a, this seems a little out of place for the area.
This is a hard one for me.
I think you can call him to the podium again, yeah.
Yeah, you can come up to the podium, sure.
So according to the current zoning, I can put that same product just in one row, correct?
Correct.
So that would still, by right, that would still get that look? I mean, I want to keep a residential feel. I want to sell it to individuals who are, you know, first home kind of person, or someone that's retiring, wants to go there, want that. So I want to keep that feel, but just have a product where it's, you can put more in there and still get it, so. So I totally understand where you're coming from, for sure.
Yeah, I don't disagree with the, with what the current zoning allows. I think the back of it is just a little too much for that area. I drive that road every day and have for the last 25-plus years. So-
Well, you know, without the back, or less in the back, you've got less parking, and that's going to make your water runoff. As I recall, as I say, I walked it with my dogs, and when you get on the downhill side, it kind of, you come up, and then the yard sort of dips down, and there's, and it's a little higher. I guess there was a garage or an old barn or something up on this end and up on the left-hand side, but, you know, that might, you know, the water runoff is an issue because it is higher and it dips right there, and yes, I can see what he's saying about it coming out off from up higher.
Also, just again to clarify, that under Virginia stormwater regulations, you have to handle your quality and quantity on-site, so.
But my point is, it's with less paved, impervious area. I mean, it's a beautiful yard. I wish I'd been around 20 or 30 years ago, when you might have been able to save that home.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, he'll, anything that he constructs, he'll have to construct sufficient stormwater holding basins, which aren't always super attractive, but he'll have to construct something to handle that, an equivalent amount of water runoff for the, whatever impervious he constructs, so.
I think I'm going to be a dissenter here. Though I appreciate consistent zoning, just as much as anyone, we have to make it profitable for the guy who wants to bring the money. And I don't think this is extreme. He's not building a 20-story building. He's building, talking about building, what, moderately sized, affordable homes, which would be perfect in that neighborhood. So I'm really, I don't know, this one's really a tough one for me. Just, it might not be worthwhile for him to only build seven. So it's, it's, I mean, I hope that is, that's an okay point of view. Maybe I'm being-
Well, and I think, should I run my mouth?
You all on the podium.
I think the real problem is the number. And we can't ask you to do this, but, you know, if maybe the number was a little less, and obviously then the paved, the impervious area a little less, you might-
I'm open to that, and maybe looking at the water issue, too, and looking at all those factors, what makes sense to put there.
And, you know, and bring a plan, actually, that we can see everybody, the folk, we might feel a little better about it.
Yeah, and I think including trees, including how, where your runoff comes-
We're kind of getting ahead of ourselves, though, with that, aren't we?
Yeah, but I just think we need a little more preparation to convince me, I mean, where is your, your water runoff going? Where is that on the map? Where is it going to, where is that going to be allowed for in that property? You know, just a more complete presentation of exactly the way everything is going to be.
Engineer's out of town today, so I'm doing this winging it.
Yeah.
But I asked him to look at those things, but we'll go back to the drawing board.
Yeah, just a little short for me of the complete, the complete look, and how, and everything that needs to be addressed, you know, in making that happen.
Right.
The questions that we've asked.
The, if the applicant wanted to, if you want to, you can ask to have your application tabled and come back with more information in the future if you don't feel that you want to vote tonight, but you're also entitled to vote tonight.
And another, I would like you to address the safety issue of a rooftop living, too. I mean, that, to me, needs, I need to feel good about that, and of course, you would meet all the safety requirements, but I don't know what those are.
Oh, we can do that. It's going to be safer than it is now.
Yes, that's right, but nobody's in there now, so.
I don't know what's in there.
Yeah, maybe some-
But I understand.
Yeah, yeah, you understand. For me to be responsible for approving, taking on one, my vote is an approval, I would like to feel good that it is, everything is in place and in order and approved and safe and got a place for it, and that, you know, the, the green space looks good, and, you know, it's going to be something pleasant for the neighbors to look at. I mean, you all live in, all live in there together. It can't just be just about that, those townhomes there. I mean, so, that many is a lot.
It is. They've used that product in Charlottesville and Harrisonburg, which one you mentioned that, but it's had success with it, so.
Yeah. So are you interested in us voting today, or are you interested in tabling, bringing us more information?
I mean, I'm happy to bring you more information, so if you think that's a better fit, do that.
Then I'll make a motion. We table this matter?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor of tabling the request by Jacob Turner to change the zoning of 1040 Reservoir Street, tax map 47-1-215-5, from RG5 Residential to RMF Multifamily, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? Thank you very much, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
You can ask him later.
Okay, now we have a public, public hearing on a request by Magnolia Crossing LLC to change the zoning of 1504 13th Street, tax map 44-4-23-1, from RS7 Single Family Residential to RMX Mixed Residential.
Yeah, this is the one by the cemetery.
And it looks like Luke's going to give us the show.
So the subject property here is 1504 13th Street, which is located at the corner of 13th and Linden. Has this small sort of pink house, if you've seen that, driven by on 13th. It's kind of memorable. Located here right in the center of the city, near Ridgeview Park and the cemetery. The applicant's requesting a rezoning from RS7, which is Single Family Residential, to RMX Mixed Residential. This is also an upzoning, it's increasing the allowable intensity of use. The applicant intends to demolish the existing structure and construct a corner lot duplex. The current structure is a frame house constructed in 1944, and it is not historic, designated historic. This is the applicant's picture that they provided of the kind of thing that they're looking at. Again, it's not proffered, so it's just conceptual, but giving you a sense of what could be built on the site. So here's the vicinity. As you can see, Riverview Cemetery is right behind there. This is the subject property right here. The other three corners of Linden and 13th are taken up with an apartment building right here, owned by Ollie Properties, the Fishburne Pharmacy, Haley Chiropractic here, and then the Roller Family Dentistry on the third corner. So this is the only corner that is not either a commercial or multifamily use. Immediately behind it is single-family dwellings in the RS7 District. And then on the next block up is mostly multifamily dwellings in the RMX District. And we're proposing a rezoning to RMX. RG5 would honestly be almost a better fit for what the applicant is after, but because there's no RG5 zoning in this district, even though it does match the comp plan, I opt to just extend the RMX zoning, just to keep the area consistent. So currently, the site is zoned RS7, which allows only single-family detached homes on 7,000-square-foot lots. The RMX zone that's proposed allows a mix of housing types, including townhomes and smaller, there's a lower density limit than the RMF zone, but shorter multifamily structures. It does not allow most duplexes, but it does allow corner lot duplexes. There's some sort of weird differences between RG5 and RMX that don't end up being relevant because of the nature of the site. They end up being functionally almost the same. So RMX doesn't allow duplexes, and RG5 does, but RMX allows corner lot duplexes, and this is a corner lot, so that's irrelevant. RMX allows small multifamily buildings, and RG5 doesn't, but the site's too small to meet the dimensional standards for them, so that is also irrelevant. So it ends up being functionally the same as RG5. The parcel is not a very large one. The dimensions kind of limit the high-intensity uses. If the applicant really wanted to fit as many units as possible, I think it's theoretically possible that they could fit three townhomes, but they would have to be fairly small. The corner lot duplex makes probably more sense with the, with the site. This is the comprehensive plan for the area. The blocks to the north are designated for professional office and neighborhood retail. And then we have, again, we're back to our favorite park designation for the cemetery.
It's a peaceful park.
Yeah. And then we have, you could have visited for a long time. The medium-density residential is the designation for most of the tree streets. And in this case, the RS7 zoning, which is single-family only, is really meant for low-density residential. Medium-density residential is more meant for RG5 and those middle-density residential districts, so this rezoning would be, would bring it into conformance with the comprehensive plan, similar to the one that we did recently on Walnut. Staff is recommending approval. Because the proposed rezoning matches the comprehensive plan, the area is appropriate for more intense development. It's located near the center of the city, in the gridded area with utilities and infill already installed. And it's still less intense than the land uses on the other three corners, so we feel since all the other three corners are already multifamily structures, commercial structures, that it would be appropriate for a duplex here. So, any questions from the planning commission?
Again, could you go back to your zoning map? The property, catatonic corner above it.
Here?
Yes, off of Laurel?
Mm-hmm.
That's also residential?
Yes.
With the fence around it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, these are all-
So you do have one catatonic corner that's also residential.
That's true, yes.
Okay.
And I believe that one is a single-family home in the RS7 District, yeah. Any other questions?
No questions for me. Would the applicant like to approach the podium? If you'd just state your name and address, that'd be great.
Good morning, my name's Asher Brand, 1768 Rockfish Road, Waynesboro. I was surprised it's not historic. That's the, kind of caught me off-guard there.
It's not, outside the district, yeah.
The, the house is in really pretty severe disrepair and isn't really habitable, in my opinion, you know, so we'd like to improve the property with a nice duplex facing Linden and 13th Street. And I think we could make it fit that neighborhood, which is really a nice little neighborhood. That would be our goal. If any questions for me.
Any questions for the applicant?
Quick question for Luke. Are we rezoning the three lots into one to be able to build the duplex?
No, that'd be a subdivision or a lot line adjustment, and the-
Okay.
Most of the old part of the city is subdivided into these 25-foot strips.
Yeah.
But you can build across them. If you have three of them, then you can combine them into one site for the purposes of construction.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Brand? Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Hold on, I got my pages. Okay, I can open the public hearing now. Public hearing on a request by Magnolia Crossing LLC to change the zoning of 1504 13th Street, tax map 44-4-23-1, from RS7 Single Family Residential to R-MX Mixed Residential. Public hearing's open. Do you have any comments? Anyone from the-
We received no written comments on this one.
Comments from the crowd? I don't see any comments from the crowd. I'm going to close the public hearing. And any other discussion among commissioners and staff?
No, I think it'll be a more appropriate use for that spot. I always thought that house looked odd on that lot anyway.
The lot looks big.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the changing, the zoning of 1504 Thirteenth Street, tax map number forty-four dash four dash twenty-three dash one from RS7 Single Family Residential to R dash MX Mixed Residential.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that on condition that you'll change your motion to be that not we change the zoning, but we recommend the town council, or city council that they change this on.
I forgot that part. Alright.
Okay, as...
As amended by...
As, as stated by Mr. Ari.
Yeah.
Could I have a vote on everyone in favor of recommending the zoning change as stated by our two commissioners?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? Motion carries?
That's alright. As soon as I got done, I remembered. I see.
Let them know they don't, people don't have to stick around.
Oh, yeah, you guys can, if you're done, you can leave. You don't have to stay, but thank you very much.
Good luck with that.
Let's see, we've got one more? No, one more.
You're going to get fined if you leave early.
We do. We do.
Okay, now we're going to, we're going to work on a public hearing request by Wayne Theater Alliance for a certificate of appropriateness to demolish a contributing structure in the downtown historic district at 531 West Main Street, tax map forty-five dash three dash thirty-two.
Alright, thank you, Madam Chair, again. The request tonight is for the building that has the mural on it right next to the Wayne Theater, the red brick building just up the street here, 531 West Main Street. The downtown historic district was established in 2001 and it's got forty-three contributing structures in it that were built between eighteen oh six and nineteen fifty-one. This particular structure was built in, I believe, nineteen forty-nine, so right on the tail end of that, just barely made it into being historic. Just as a quick reminder, I know we just did the Chestnut Avenue COA the other day, so you all are probably very fresh on this, but certificates of appropriateness are granted by the planning commission, not the council, so this is, you are voting to give the certificate. You're not voting to make a recommendation in this case. It allows for demolition of a contributing structure in the historic district. And if you deny it, there are alternative methods of recourse. The applicant can put up the property for sale. I believe that's what happened with the house that Mr. Hawesrath renovated at some point in the, in the past. But, so there are alternative methods, but the certificate of appropriateness will give them the ability to go and pull a demo permit, so. I just, I probably shouldn't have copied this whole thing over, but this is from the historic registry, the entry for it. I like to have these just for reference, so they usually have documented anything that's particularly special about the building. It says, "It's a two-story modern commercial building with projecting end bays and a recessed central block. Exterior features include brick laid in a stretcher bond, a flat roof, large rectangular window openings with flat arches and cast stone stills, and steel windows with fixed center panels and transoms and flanking operable casements." It's mostly referring to the, the stuff on the front. "The front entrance with meta-frame double-leaf door with side lights and a transom on which is painted 'Main Street Building' is recessed within the building's central bay, which is flanked by lanterns that incorporate translucent glass panels into a metal framework with shallow Tudor arches and Art Deco motifs. The building used for offices has a simple interior consisting of a double-loaded central corridor that begins just past the front stair hall. Contractor Robert W. Gray, whose office was located in the building, was responsible for its construction." That is the history of the building as provided in the historic registry. So the applicant wishes to demolish the one-story rear section. There's a two-story part in front that you can see in this, in this photograph here. And then behind it, the remainder of the building is one-story. The applicant intends to renovate the two-story front section and retain that part, the part that you can see from the street, and then the, the back section that's in a pretty advanced state of decay, will be torn down. The Wayne Theater Alliance owns most of the property on the block and they've got a long-term plan to redevelop it. And so this is part of that and, and part of trying to reduce their liability at that particular site. So the structure here is one-story. It's concrete foundation with a brick facade. Mentioned in the, the entry, that's got a simple interior. There is significant water damage and structural damage. As mentioned, it's, it's a fairly straightforward building for its time, like a fairly simple construction. No particular architectural, major noticeable architectural details other than the, the steel casement windows and some of the stuff up front. You can see in these photos, kind of the state that the water damage and some of the brick decay has caused around the building, which would make it very difficult to renovate and repair. And you can see there's some settling even that's happening in the joint between these two sections here. Inside, the building's in a pretty advanced state of disrepair as well. Quite a bit of mildew and, and water damage. And, yeah, significant damage to all the, the internal walls as well. It would be, any, any, all damage is repairable, but this would be probably comparable to building a new building. So the criteria that the zoning code gives for evaluating certificates of occupancy, or, sorry, certificates of appropriateness, I like to, to list them during these presentations just to kind of go through and it provides a nice framework for thinking about it. One is whether or not the building or structure embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, style, method of construction. Particular work of a master has some kind of high artistic value or is associated with historically significant persons. This particular structure is not associated with any historically significant persons. The method of construction is sort of interesting in that it's a modern Art Deco building. Certainly in the front of the building is more interesting than the back, but overall, it's a fairly simple structure. Whether or not the building or structure contributes visible architectural value to or continuity with properties in the same block, including both sides of the street. So often, we talk about the street wall when retaining some of these historic buildings, that sense of enclosure and being in a historic area. And by retaining the front portion of the building, the applicant will preserve that, so you'll still have the same feel on Main Street, but you'll have an altered feel just from the alley. Whether the building or structure is of such age authenticity and unusual or uncommon design, workmanship, et cetera, whether it could be reproduced. The method of construction in this particular case, kind of similar to the Chestnut Shed that we dealt with the other day, not particularly different from construction methods that are used today, and I would argue that it's, it's not a particularly distinct building historically in that sense. Specific plans for the site, should the structure or building be demolished? Oftentimes, there are nice buildings, but we, you know, the goal of the historic ordinance is not to stop development in the city in its tracks, so if someone is going to build a better, larger, you know, newer building, sometimes we would still approve it. In this case, they're not planning to construct anything now, just going to grasp the back part of it. But in the future, they hope to redevelop the whole, the whole block. Whether it's economically or practically feasible to preserve or restore the structure, it could be, or whether they can make alternative economically viable uses of the property. They can obviously restore it to be offices again. There's not a huge demand for office space in downtown Waynesboro, but that would certainly be possible. It would just be a significant expense. Staff does not feel relocation would be appropriate or feasible.
It'll fall apart.
Yeah, I think that would fall apart, as soon as you picked it up. And then whether it's suited to or can be adapted to a proposed change in land use. Again, it's in the CB district, so there really is not, you know, it, just about all land uses are currently approved there. So because it's not associated with any historically significant events and it's kind of on the tail end of the historic district's range anyway, and we feel that the city would benefit from it being torn down, staff is recommending approval of the COA. Any questions for me?
Luke, can you go back to that one picture, right, right? Are we sure that that addition is original to the, to the structure? The reason I ask is because the, the brick doesn't continue through like it was built at the same time.
I've had that thought. I could not find any record, though, of an addition, so I'm, I'm not sure. It, it may have been tacked on later and we just don't have a record of it, but I don't know.
Yeah, because by the looks of that, and if you've got one on the other side and you've got something on the roof line, I'd be almost willing to bet that that's an addition that was added after the original two-story structure was built.
It's kind of interesting. You can see in this, in this picture that this back third of the one-story section is at an angle, sort of offset, so I'm not exactly sure how that happened.
It was a Monday when they built that, when they laid the lines out.
Yeah. But I think, I think that at least the front portion of the one-story was certainly built the same time as this front two-story section. But maybe the applicant will know more about that and can answer that, some of those questions.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else for me?
Thank you very much, Luke.
Thank you, Luke.
Would the applicant like to approach the podium and give your name and address, please?
My name's John Rohr. I live at 1838 I Spring Hill Road, Stanton, Virginia, and I'm a board member on the Wayne Theater Alliance. And basically, we need to tear it down before it falls down.
Yeah.
But we're just trying to stay ahead, one step ahead of Mr. Hanbury.
Did you, did I understand that when you tear it down, there'll be a grassed-up area? What, what is the plans for that?
The immediate plans would be to take it down, fill it in with grass, and leave it as a grassed area while we...
Figure out what to do.
Yeah, we have, we actually do own every building up the street now to whatever that next road is. So we, we own the whole block now, except for your parking lot. So, yeah, we would, we have lots of long-range plans.
Sure.
It could be a, you know, a conference center or something, a meeting place, that kind of stuff. And we'll probably use the front building for offices for the theater itself.
Definitely needs to go.
Yeah, I think we all agree with that.
I, I agreed with that, but let me ask a question. Have you had any testing or engineering done? Architect or anybody look at the front building? If you tear down that back part, will it affect the structural...
Integrity.
Integrity of the front building?
No, because I think, well, we've had people look at it, we've looked at it. I'm a Class A contractor, and it looks like that it's, the way it's built, that it's not really attached. It's attached, but it's not attached, like the gentleman said there with the, if you're looking at the bricks, the bricks don't line up, the block doesn't line up.
Yeah, the roof line doesn't.
It might have been built three days after they finished the two-story part, but it's going to come down just fine.
Right.
And we also believe that when the first, when the back comes down, it's going to open up two windows in the back that we think got covered up.
I'd be shocked if you didn't find a rear entrance covering it up, too.
I think, I think you're correct. You'll find two windows and a door.
Any questions?
And honestly, it's got, you know, landscaping growing on the roof.
Yeah.
It's a rooftop garden.
Yeah, well, they're, they're in vogue now, the green roofs.
I don't know if I'd stand on that roof. I'd go with a flat roof from the forties, if I'd go with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
Even though, I personally don't think it was built in forty-nine when the first part was built, but it probably was built in the fifties, late fifties. Have y'all had any interest from anybody about wanting to come in and salvage that brick? Because you can't find brick from that era very easily anymore.
No, we really didn't get into the salvaging point until we got through tonight.
Oh, okay, but, I mean...
Certainly well worth looking into.
What might bring y'all a little, little, little change?
We could sell everybody a brick.
There you go.
It's got a name on it.
There you go. Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing on a request by Wayne Theater Alliance for a certificate of appropriateness to demolish a contributing structure in the downtown historic district at 531 West Main Street, tax map number forty-five dash three dash thirty-two. Is there anyone in the audience who has any comments? Do you have any comments on it?
We received no written comment, no.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Further discussion among us, or does someone want to make a motion?
You're up. Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to recommend a certificate of appropriateness to demolish...
This one's to grant, not recommend.
We're going to grant it.
We're going to grant.
Grant, okay. I'll make a motion to grant the certificate of appropriateness to demolish a contributing structure in the downtown historic district at 531 West Main Street, tax map number forty-five dash three dash thirty-two.
Someone want a second?
Second. No second.
Okay, everyone in favor of granting the certificate of appropriation, appropriateness to demolish 531 West Main Street, tax map forty-five dash three dash thirty-two?
Can you say that a little, the, the back one-story part of 531 West Main Street?
Okay, I just read it as it was written here. So it would be a certificate of appropriateness to demolish part of a contributing structure in the downtown historic district at 531 West Main Street, tax map number forty-five dash three dash two, and that part being the back section.
There we go.
And we could further define it as the one-story section.
Okay, back one-story section. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? And we grant the certificate of appropriateness?
I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
For being more...
Okay, I think we're good. And we have a...
Couple more things.
Yep, we have an update on the CDBG entitlement projects?
Uh, yes, we need to take the city council our proposed CDBG projects for the next year. Again, I didn't provide, should have provided you all with some kind of list, so I'll just, but very quickly, if you all have any additional input, we didn't receive any comment at our public hearing, but if you all have additional inputs later for that, please let us know. As of right now, we are planning to contribute some money towards a Habitat for Humanity project at Kirby and C that might help result in an extension of Kirby Drive to fill that gap.
Oh, Lord, you make all my neighbors happy.
Yeah, we're also looking at contributing some money towards the warm transitional housing for, we did the same thing last year, at renovating of...
Is that specifically for housing?
Uh, it's for operations use for them.
Operations.
Yeah, and then we're also looking at spending a little bit of money on renovating a basketball court located at the Rosenwald School outside. And then we also will need to contribute some additional money towards, we're trying to construct a pedestrian refuge on Delphine Avenue at Fourth Street so that people can get across, because that kind of cuts that neighborhood in two. It's hard to walk across, but...
What, like a bridge over there?
No, no, nothing that expensive.
Like a break-in?
Like a median, you know, break.
Oh, okay, okay.
Like there is down there.
Yeah, yeah, like there's on East Main Street, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's not that much money.
Now, when you said a evening to get people across, I'm thinking...
Well, we've had some discussion about that.
Yeah. But anyway, if you all have any more input on the CDBG program, we have to file a public outreach plan, so I like to make sure we mention it as many times as possible. Also, the plans for the Greenway Phase Three go to design public hearing on August 3rd, and they are located in the back there, if you want to take a look at them.
That's the section that goes up, uh...
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, that's through the tree, through the tree streets, yeah.
What's the date of that, August?
August, is that the, make sure I'm getting that right. It's not, it's the third, not the fourth. Third or fourth. It's, sorry, it's the fourth. Yes. August 4th from 5:00 to 7:00 at the library. We received, we sent out letters already to everyone along the Fourteenth Street and have received some comments already, so. It's one of those projects that, uh...
Everybody wants, but nobody wants it in their yard?
That's right, yeah, in front of them, so. It's also been a years-long process, so everyone's pretty much aware of it at this point, and, yeah.
Has there been any more movement on connecting North Park and Basic Park? I know there was a little tract of land that was...
Yes.
Being, uh...
Yes, the, so...
Setting up, uh...
Just north of it, there is a forty-acre parcel in the floodway that we have not been successful at getting the, either the council will give us money for or the applicant, or the owner to give us. But we, DuPont did do a section of streambank remediation there under the RICRA guidelines, and they left a construction road similar to what we had them do at North Park, so we asked them to leave that one also. So that's sort of the base for at least a third of the, the distance. And then... So that's sort of the base for at least a third of the distance, and then the remainder of it, we did acquire, we did, we were awarded last year, two years ago, half funding for the project from the Transportation Alternatives Program. We're putting in another grant this year, see if we can try to get the other half. If we get that, then we'll have the cash to go and acquire easements if the owner is willing to give them to us, and then, you can only use that money for easements just where the trail is, so you, and I know that they would like to just sell the whole property, so maybe, they may or may not want to give us the easements, but, but then we'll also have the construction money, so if we can somehow acquire the property, we'll be able to build it. So, yeah, that should actually roll fairly quickly, and Phase Two B should be under construction hopefully over the winter, or next spring.
Okay.
Yep. That's all I have.
Any other commissioners, correspondents, or communication?
Um, I realize nobody is here, but I would, I'm not even sure who to thank, whichever city group was in charge of putting off the fireworks for stravagan-
Parks and Rec, yeah.
They should, they should put them off at Sunset Park every year.
That was a great, that's the best fireworks show I've ever seen.
Yeah, it was great.
Especially for me, because I sit right out in my yard.
Yeah, I highly recommend the view from right up at the top, right next to Fishburne, where the News-Virginian building was, that was the best view, yeah.
When we come down through there, there was cars already lined up alongside the road. You know, you know what would be a good thing if they decided to do it again next year? Is close down Main Street and let people put chairs-
Hmm, interesting.
Or bring little portable tables and put down, I think, sir, you're on the downtown committee, aren't you?
Yes.
Like the restaurants?
And let the restaurants feed people while they watch the fireworks.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be awesome, that's a great-
Food trucks or something.
And see, there would be the justification to put the lights across the street.
That's right. Right, right.
I will say that's, I was, I drove over to Basic City Beer around seven, probably a couple hours before the, and it was already people lining up at lawn chairs and stuff across Constitution Park, and next to the Metal Crafters Building, they were everywhere early.
Yeah.
People, like, loved the fireworks.
You can see it from everywhere.
Yeah, I gotta say, we watched it, my brother was here, we watched it from my backyard, and it was like totally perfectly framed between these Chinese junipers, it was like the show was put on just for us, it was great.
So, Luke, is there an update on this, on Sunset Park? What's the, how's that coming?
It's been in the same place for three years, just waiting for money. You know, there was, it was funded three or four years ago, and then we had the firetruck issue, and then we had the Florence Avenue Bridge thing, and the pot kind of got raided again, so, and COVID, it got cut, so, we just, it needs to be a high enough priority that that becomes the thing that gets funded. I will say that this American Recovery Act money that the city's poised to receive, we're still working through the guidance from the Treasury on what are allowable expenditures for it, so far they've said water and sewer projects can be done with it. There was just the other day, a bit of guidance that said that parks and open space in qualifying census tracts, which is census tracts that have an income below fifty percent of your area median income, which that census tract does qualify, so it appears that Sunset Park would be a valid use of those funds.
Yeah, I just saw in the paper today, where City Charlesville got twenty million dollars from that thing.
Yeah, we got about nine million, so we'll get it in two payments, we have four and a half this year and four and a half next year, so, yeah, that would be a thing to mention to any counselors you pay now.
What about, another one is extending the bicycle trail from the tunnel on down to-
Yes, that is, we could spend all nine million dollars doing that, unfortunately, but that would be another neat thing to do.
How about a zip line?
Yeah, if we could get past that railroad track, that would be great.
Yeah, 'cause didn't the state take over that rail line or something?
They, that's my understanding, they're purchasing that, they've not made a big announcement or anything, but, um, it's, yeah, that project just, I'm not, unfortunately, it just seems to grow more and more expensive, and the more you get into the details, so it seems like such a no-brainer, and not even that far, but it's just, that, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause that little, that little building right there, where Bradley's used to be, would be a perfect tourist center, welcoming center, or whatever the-
Yeah, and the East Main Street, Greenway, which we're supposed to construct in twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-four, is supposed to have its terminus right there at those buildings, and to connect with our planned tunnel trail, so eventually the idea is you could take the tunnel trail all the way to Basic City Beer and downtown and stuff, which would be great, but it's, like I said, it's just kind of, you know, you could do four, you could do Sunset Park five times before we can actually get that done, so.
Any movement on the rest of the, the Metal Crafters Building?
We've not received a site plan application from anyone yet, we've heard that there is a potential tenant, but I've not seen a site plan.
That'd be a perfect spot for some little retail shops, kind of like Dayton Farmer's Market.
If you know somebody.
Well, I do, but he, he doesn't want to get back into the development business, he's Although he is waiting for us to finish up Sunset Park and put the bike trails up so he can come ride his bike over here.
I'm waiting for it, too.
I do have a question about the property behind the old Kmart building.
Yes.
Has that been purchased?
Um-
I mean, I know there's Amazon, but then there's-
There's a lot of woods behind it, so that property is actually all part of the Kmart property, the Kmart property goes all the way down towards Ludowit, and the rear section, yeah, is not being used by Amazon, the owner has talked about subdividing it off and proposing apartments there, but I have not seen, I've seen a concept drawing from them, but I've not seen an application. They were, they were telling me they were gonna give me application next month, and that was six months ago, so, how those things tend to go.
Yeah, okay.
Be great.
But that is something to keep in mind, to think about a little bit, because you may or may not see a rezoning for that at some point in the future, and that'd be a pretty big project.
When they gonna come back with you with, oh, they changed the name on it, and I can't, the subdivision behind the Walmart and Buffalo Wild Wings?
Queekwood Village?
Queekwood Village.
Yeah, that's all been approved, the, the site plan, or the, the road construction plans, I believe, have, are either approved, or they're very close to being approved, and they'll be able to do construction there. I think they scaled back a little bit how many houses they were gonna build in their first phase, because they need to test the waters a little bit first, but as far as I know, they're still moving forward.
Yeah, 'cause I know we had that one feller said he bought ten acres they had to retire on, and wasn't happy that they were gonna put a subdivision in there, but-
Yeah. It's a city.
Might want to sell that.
Yeah.
Tell them to subdivide.
Yeah, he might want to get that rezoned.
Well, this ain't exactly the country, is it?
There's some folks that talked to me, and after a while, I talked to them about their complaints about this, that neighborhood, and eventually I end up saying, really sound like you would rather be in Augusta County to me, I don't know.
I'll take it from me, I'd rather be in the middle of ten thousand acres in Wyoming with nobody around me.
And the property that they're built, that tore down the lab, building-
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
That's moving forward, yeah, so they've, they're only, they've only submitted site plans for the front section, so they don't have an anchor tenant in the back yet, but they hope to get a grocery store in the future, but, and as of now, it'll be sheets, Popeyes, Chipotle, a dentist's office, and then an oil change place.
I hope they take into consideration the traffic that Popeyes and Harrisonburg generates.
Yeah, there was actually, there's actually quite a bit of work on Rossar Avenue that they have to do as part of that rezoning, as part of their proffer. Yeah, you all haven't really, we're sort of past the commercial boom, and so you haven't seen the big commercial rezonings with the road proffers and everything, missed out on all that fun.
So, Luke, what are you gonna do about this lack of rain? We need to plan for more rain.
I, I don't know, it's not a budget issue, it's not a land use issue.
Alright, I think we are ready to adjourn, does somebody want to move, adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting, I'll be planning this.
Second.
Everyone in favor of adjourned the meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
We're done.